Good evening. We're going to get our meeting started now. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank you all for coming. We will have some rules. Everybody who signed up to speak will get three minutes. And if we... everybody speaks that's on the list, and we still have time left over, you can go back and sign up to speak again. We will not... the board will not be responding to questions during the meeting. And we want everyone in the crowd to respect the person that is speaking. And with that, we'll get started.
Okay, so number one is a bill. I'm sorry for pronouncing last name. Wonderful. The second speaker after Bill will be Nancy Youska.
I'm Bill Douglas. I'm a five-o-eight main street in Cootier. On section three, A1, the size of the board will soon be changing. So this sentence will soon be outdated. I would suggest just dropping number three so that it does not have to be revisited. The following suggestions represent a need to balance the county's privilege in agriculture with a recognition of the importance of welcoming safe, non-pollute industry. Section two N prohibiting solar panels on land with CSR six or higher is too restrictive. Similarly, section one A banning outright any installations over 25 megawatts seems unwelcome. And the argument about how much land it currently takes to produce a megawatt does not belong in this ordinance and could quickly become outdated. Perhaps in a compromise, the CSR restriction could apply to larger installations. The previous board during the windmill controversy expressed a healthy fear of litigation that the ordinance was too restrictive. Given the very recent decisions on behalf of landlords by the Iowa Supreme Court and other Iowa courts, I believe the board should be wary of being overly restrictive of property owner rights. Section four subsection three setbacks are yet to be pulled in on the draft. The standard setback most counties have adopted is fifty feet. The Tama County Land Use Plan: Privilege in Agriculture was adopted almost forty years ago. A lot has changed since then in agriculture, in the makeup of the county, and in the global climate. It was adopted before the advent of the ethanol economy. As landlord owner pointed out in a previous hearing, solar power is a much more land-efficient way to produce energy than from corn. Preserving our topsoil is going to require multiple initiatives, and I believe using our land through solar could be part of the solution.
After Nancy, we have Elise.
My name is Nancy Youska, and my husband and I farm north of Trayer in Buckingham Township. Your draft changes due to solar zoning ordinance are a very good start, and I thank you for working to make it even more comprehensive by including many of the very important suggestions presented to you tonight to preserve our precious highly productive agricultural farmland for future generations. I may be the only one here tonight urging you to identify specific setback language pertaining to the many small rural in the county cemeteries that could be surrounded by industrial solar panels. The changes to the language in this solar ordinance are the only way of protecting them. We must advocate for all those at eternal rest in these cemeteries as they no longer can. Many times when proponents of big industrial solar projects speak about landowner rights and property rights, the conversation never seems to get around to addressing the opinions of the neighboring farmers and acreage owners and how many of them oppose it entirely. I feel it imperative that the ordinance include language that protects these non-participating landowners. I submit for your consideration inserting language that speaks directly to just how many neighbors of a proposed project are against the development. I propose that the ordinance mandate any developer to submit documentation that certifies a majority of property owners within a certain radius of the project as not opposed to it. How big that radius is can be debated, but this ordinance must protect non-participating landowners from this encroachment. These solar arrays can be seen for miles, especially if they were to be placed on top of hilly land, which may be the type of property that would have the lower CSR2 ratings in your draft ordinance. The reason is because property values will most surely decrease for non-participating neighbors as these projects totally destroy the beauty of any rural landscape. It is the property rights of the non-participating neighbors that I am most concerned about. I also support the CSR2 limit of being fifty or lower. Since your fee structure section six did not have any amounts identified, I believe the ordinance should require a non-refundable permit fee of $50,000 to be paid upfront at the time any permits are sought. Monetary fines to be assessed to the developer for failure to comply with any section of the ordinance, building permit, et cetera, on a per day, per violation amount should be in the $10,000 range. I don't think the fee schedule should be lowballed, but instead strong enough to protect our county and encourage compliance.
After Elise, we're going to have Heather.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elias Tashiro, working for Ted Renewables, a solar development company which is based in Kansas City, Kansas. And we have an early stage project here in Tama County, and I'll be the lead developer of the project. I'm here with a couple of my colleagues, and I'll be talking a little bit about the overview of the project and the process, and my colleagues will go in a little bit more about the solar ordinance. I want to start my time by saying that our project is still at a very early stage of development. It typically takes three to four years for a project to reach construction base, and we are still at year one of development for this project. For the next few years, we'll be conducting a series of studies and fieldwork, including but not limited to identifying and avoiding wetlands, also threatened and dangerous species, any impacts to culturally significant landmarks. Throughout the process, we will be following all regulations of us, and we will be working together with names such as Iowa Department of Natural Resources, Iowa State Historic Preservation Office, US Army Corps of Engineers, and other governmental entities and organizations. We will also be working with Tama County to go through the solar ordinance process. We appreciate the county taking the effort and necessary steps to update the existing solar ordinance, because we believe the good solar ordinance will benefit not only the county, but also the project, since it gives us a clear understanding of what the steps and requirements are for getting it current. We are truly excited to be working with Tama County. Again, we are still at a very early stage of the development process, so we want to spend all the time that we need to talk with you all and understand your questions, concerns, and make sure that this project will be beneficial to everyone that is involved. Thank you very much.
After Heather, it's going to be Lynn.
Hello, my name is Heather Knibble. I live in rural Trayer on an acreage with my family. I want to start out by thanking you three supervisors for taking action to update our ordinances to include a utility-scale solar ordinance. I thank you for upholding your duty as an elected official to protect the land, health, and livelihood of all taxpayers in Tama County. This ordinance includes several things that I approve of and helps protect the people who do not want utility-scale solar next to their house or farmland. I cannot imagine having a field full of solar panels next to my acreage. It would ruin the property value and my view, and the fire risk is a concern well as well. I hundred percent agree with the no industrial projects on farmland with CSR2 of sixty or higher. This is some of the best farmland in the world, and it should stay that way to feed the world. This statement applies to wind and solar. There should be no industrial projects on land with sixty CSR or higher, period. Here are a few things that I believe are missing from the ordinance and would like your consideration of adding. First, I believe a permit should only be submitted when a developer is ready to build. If they do not build within four months of approval, the conditional use permit or building permit should be revoked. Second, the ordinance currently states the requirements of this ordinance shall apply only to all utility-scale solar energy systems proposed after the effective date. Instead of saying proposed project, it should say any projects not approved yet by the Tama County Supervisors. The height section is currently blank. I recommend it state the height shall not exceed ten feet at maximum tilt of the solar panel. The setback is also currently blank. I recommend it to be one mile from a non-participating landowner's dwelling and a half mile from a non-participating landowner's property line. My rights and property are just as important as someone that owns farmland. For decommissioning, it needs to say a third-party professional engineer will provide the estimate of the decommissioning cost. Often, the developer or builder provides the estimate themselves. That's just not right. For decommissioning costs, a real security cash deposit in an escrow account at one-hundred-and-fifty percent of the estimated decommissioning costs needs done before approval of the project. The interest made would go to the county each year. The project needs to be only transferable if the ordinances can be met, escrow for decommissioning can be transferred, and the Board of Supervisors approve of the new company taking ownership. So thank you again for your desire to approve the utility-scale solar ordinance to protect everyone in Tama County. I look forward to partnering with you. Thank you.
After Lynn, it's going to be Justin.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. My name is Linda Chezak. My husband Jeff and I live on an acreage east of Trayer on Highway eight for over thirty years. This nine-hundred-acre proposed solar complex will completely surround our home to the west, the north, and to the east with thousands of black solar panels, aluminum grid, and underground electrical systems. Needless to say, this is not what we envisioned for our neighborhood. We have young families with young children living in our neighborhood. No one, including industrial solar, knows the future health repercussions of living next door to this many solar panels, not to mention this is some of the best farmland in Tama County. Jeff and I have been attending weekly Board of Supervisor meetings since February to help craft an industrial solar ordinance for this county. Right now, we don't have an industrial ordinance, only residential and commercial. Tama County is very vulnerable right now. We need a strong industrial solar ordinance to protect Tama County citizens and their families. Regarding the first draft of the proposed solar ordinance, our opinion is there needs to be some changes. Number one, section one A, the very first statement. The requirements of this ordinance shall apply only to all utility-scale solar energy systems proposed after the effective date of this ordinance. Instead of the word proposed, it should read permitted by the Tama County Board of Supervisors. Under this draft ordinance, maximum solar systems would be two-hundred-and-fifty acres. We believe that is too much land for this purpose. We agree with the CSR rating of less than sixty. Section two N, there should be two independent opinions for the CSR rating of the land, not just the primary landowners. Number five, setback should be at least one-half to one mile from any rural acreage landowner. Rural acreage landowners have rights too. We matter, we count, we pay our taxes, we support our schools, our small businesses, our towns, our firemen, our policemen, our ambulance services. We count, we have a very strong voice. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
After Justin, it's going to be Al.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Justin Wills, and I'm here tonight with my coworkers Elias Tashiro and Bill Tini, and we're from Ted Renewables. So I want to first thank the Board of Supervisors for being here and thanking everybody else for attending to come and discuss the solar ordinance tonight. I want to start off by giving everyone a little background of what Ted has done up to now. On March seventeenth, Ted filed comments with the county which provided a few best practices seen in solar ordinances throughout the Midwest. He suggested several additions to the ordinance which are typical and would improve the protections of the county. One, a provision requiring a decommissioning plan. And two, a reuse agreement. The decommissioning plan generally requires the solar developer to provide a bond to return the land back to its original condition at the end of its operating life. A reuse agreement would require agreement on construction routes to be valuated before and after construction. Any damages caused during the construction phase would be repaired. In our submission to the county, we also included a solar site and guide from the Iowa Environmental Council and the Center for Rural Affairs, which aims to advise communities on how to craft workable ordinances that enable successful solar development. There are a few things that we were glad to see in the draft ordinance, which will protect the interests of the county without deterring investment. These things are a site plan showing the location of all solar arrays and associated equipment, a specification of height limit, a specification of setbacks from residences, roads, and property lines, a provision requiring appropriate fencing and signage. There are some provisions in this draft which are unworkable and will deter good faith investment in Tama County. To be a good place for business in Iowa, we recommend removing the project size restriction in section two J. The acreage that Ted is currently leasing represents less than half a percent of all agricultural land in Tama County. We also recommend removing section two N, which prohibits solar development on land with specific corn suitability ratings. A rule like this only penalizes private landowners for owning high-quality land, land which won't be degraded by hosting solar. Finally, we recommend that section eight, which limits building within one-hundred and five-hundred-year flood plan, be removed. A restriction on building in a five-hundred-year flood plan is overly restrictive, and generally, solar developers avoid building within a one-hundred-year flood plan because it triggers further permits and increases project costs. We're looking forward to continuing this process with everybody in the community, and if you have questions, be sure to reach out to me, Elias, or Bill and get our contact information after this. Thank you all.
After Al, it's going to be Janet Wilson.
Hello. Thanks for letting us speak at this public hearing tonight on commercial solar projects. My name is Al Shafal, and I live in Dyership on Sherman Street. I recently attended the Commandant Classic, which is a farm meeting for corn growers, sorghum growers, wheat, and sorghum growers. I had attendance over a hundred thousand farmers. The Secretary of Agriculture, Tom Bilsec, spoke to everyone at the general session. The USDA Secretary of Agriculture, Tom Bilsec, spoke to everyone about renewable energy for the future. With this comment, we need to make sure and not put solar and land on our best farmland. Tom Bilsec knows the value of good farmland to feed the expanding population, and the best land must be used for food production. I'm asking Tama County to pass an A1 ordinance similar to that county prohibiting development on land with a corn suitability rating to over seventy or above. I believe Tama County can probably do better by going to sixty CSR or better. Solar under a solar panel receives less sunlight and would be eroded after the solar panels are installed. We need to protect our cow calf producers using this land. The current draft of the county utility solar energy ordinance is very good ordinance. Well done, well written. Only needs a few numbers for heights, setback, and where buildings can be erected. There also needs to be a section that gives Tama County to access penalties on solar companies if the ordinance is not filed without any laws saying that they can be penalized. They can do anything they want, and there's no way of stopping it. Thank you very much.
After Janet, it's going to be Linda Moller.
I live on a fourth-generation farm operation north of Cootier, and I'm the wife of a volunteer firefighter. I support including strong fire safety measures in the Tama County industrial solar ordinance. Faulty installation is the leading cause of solar panel fires. Design flaws, component defects, foundation failures, frosty, flooding, humidity, hailstorms, animals, and buildup of debris such as grass or trash have been implicated in arcing or hotspots. Regardless of the cause, hotspots can result in solar panel backing materials catching fire. Long after the initial event, fire damaged panels can begin arcing and continue to generate potentially lethal amounts of direct current electricity as long as they are exposed to light until there is a system failure or other intervention. When solar cells burn, they release carcinogens, cadmium telluride and gallic marsonite, as well as lethal amounts of phosphorus. Because inhalation of these nanoparticles causes silicosis in the lungs, a firefighter must wear a self-contained breathing apparatus. The toxic smoke and other noxious materials from solar panel fires contaminate the air as well as the soil, which seriously impacts biodiversity. These consequences are unlikely to be reversed after a fire. Solar panels are not a risk for explosion, but inverters and solar batteries are. Also, solar battery fires cannot be extinguished with water, adding to the danger. Solar panels can crack in high winds, sending blast shards flying. Solar projects at risk for leak or dry grass fires. With exponential growth in the renewable energy sector, the number of fire occurrences will only increase. There were seventy-one industrial solar panel fires since 2015 with a thirty-six percent increase from 2017 to 2018, according to the U.S. Fire Administration. According to Fire Trace International, few solar projects utilize fire risk assessment because it is not required. Instead, solar companies rely on their insurance provider to cover the losses rather than implementing fire suppression technology. When automatic fire suppression systems are installed in high-risk areas of the facility like the inverters, they can detect and suppress a fire before it spreads. These systems can also provide notifications to shut down and disconnect the inverters. These systems should be required. Solar projects need to be inspected and tested by third parties with standardized quality assurance measures. They need to ensure defective damage or prematurely aged components are properly replaced. Thank you for hosting this public forum and listening to our concerns.
After Linda, it's going to be Judy Kapriva.
Hi, I'm Linda Moller, Tama County resident, living near Buckingham, Iowa. Thank you supervisors for arranging this meeting and to hear our comments about solar ordinances from people of the county. When I first heard about a solar farm being proposed in Tama County, I wondered how they could call it a farm. Since both my grandfathers, my dad, my brother, my husband, and my son have all been or are now farmers, I have associated farming with working the land, growing crops, raising animals, and enjoyment of rural life, like seeing five eagles in a nearby field. Are the acres and acres with a thousand to two thousand panels per acre really bringing green energy to Tama County? Does that energy produce state in the area or go to the grid, or maybe used out of state? What about the businesses that are depending on farming? The implement dealers, seed dealers, farm co-ops, et cetera? We want our farm businesses to thrive, not die. Although I agree that solar panels can help provide energy and individuals can have their own solar system to reduce energy costs, I learned that some people are affected by the EMF, which is electromagnetic field, so that they may not want it on their roofs, but somewhere on their property. However, we must preserve land to produce food for generations to come. I believe that the use of farmland should be reserved for agricultural purposes. Therefore, I would like to see a limit of fifty CSR to protect our most valuable agricultural acres for raising food. There are many reports of lower property values due to fields of solar panels being nearby, so I would like to see setbacks of at least two-hundred feet from residences with easements and a setback of a half mile or better from any adjoining property lines. Part of the issue is the carbon dioxide that solar panels have. But currently, the CO2 percentage of our atmosphere is about point zero four percent, which doesn't seem to be that far from a level of two-point or point zero two percent, which is when plant life starts dying. We need our trees and our grass and our crops for the oxygen that they produce. We need to keep our environment in balance for us to survive, and we need to use wisdom in our decisions that affect our world.
After Judy, it's going to be Richard Art.
Hi, my name is Judy Kapriva. I'm a landowner and live outside of Cootier, Tama County. I want to thank you for holding this hearing and giving all of us a chance to speak, whether it be for or against solar projects. So I'm not against solar energy where it pertains to personal residential use. My son has solar panels on the top of an old chicken house, and I even... I forget that he has the solar panels because they are not underground and I don't see them. And I realize that not everyone has the building to put the panels on top of. Tama County has a solar ordinance for personal, residential, and farmers, and I think that's great. But I am against industrial solar projects, so I'm asking for an ordinance on industrial commercial solar projects to protect our farmland in Tama County with a CSR2 of sixty or higher. We are subjecting our prime farmland as prey to big industry. And to those of you that signed up for land, this was never your intention years ago. I like to think that you have been farming because of your love for Iowa and just wanting to be a good steward to the land you have been blessed to farm. In the state of Iowa, solar panels only capture twenty percent of the light for only four or five days per hour per day. That means eighty percent of that energy is being inefficient, and that sunlight would be more efficient to crops that are being raised. And I've downloaded maps, and looking at a map showing peak hours of sunlight per day, the highest capture of sunlight hours is down on our Mexican border, so put them down there. I feel solar panels should be placed on rooftops and old parking lots in cities where they already have cement. And along with stewardship, we just seriously need to search out and see if there is truth to these green deals. Thank you.
After Richard, it's going to be Craig Erewee.
My name is Richard Art. I'm from Dyership, having farmed east of Cootier my whole life. Thanks. Thanks for taking time tonight to listen to all of us. As one of only four people to be asked my opinion on this solar ordinance, you guys know my opinion already. I am not against solar panels. They have their place, rooftops, backyards and poor quality ground. Not on highly rated CSR ground that God meant for us to produce food from. I hope someday that we don't regret allowing solar panels on good ground. Please knew what is right for the people of Tampa County and our future generations. Thank you for your time tonight.
After Craig is going to be Yvette Esbenzheim.
Hi, true thank you supervisor for allowing us to get our view. I'm Greg O'Leary, a fourth generation farmer living in Perry Township and have land in Perry in Clark Township. I'm concerned that industrial solar projects will decrease property values and increase insurance rates due to increased risks of fire from commercial solar projects. Commercial solar projects do not make sense and depend on heavy government subsidies funded by our tax dollars. There are better, more reliable, less costly ways to generate electricity than industrial solar projects. Tampa County should adopt strict land use ordinances to protect farmland for agricultural use and not allow developers to exploit land in our safety for industrial wind or solar projects. Solar developers have been working temporarily in Tampa County since at least July of 2022. I told you supervisor then that I had been approached to sign easements at that time. The time is now to create an industrial solar ordinance. Solar projects are not parks. They are industrial projects that destroy farmland. What has happened to the concern and well-being of our neighbors that we had in past years? Has greed overrun our concern for our neighbors? You must update the commercial wind energy ordinance and create a solar ordinance to better protect the land and the people who live here. Our zoning board has the responsibility of creating a plan for the board supervisors to approve that will protect Tampa County citizens concerning industrial projects. Why won't you make that board apply? People that are well qualified would like to help you in this area. I'm also very concerned about the conditional use permits for industrial solar or industrial wind projects. Those permits should automatically expire one year from the date they were issued by the company and not be extended. If the conditional use permit expires, the developers need to reapply and resubmit application fees in full. I am not only concerned about our future, I'm not only concerned about our lifetime, but the future of our children, grandchildren and the families. It concerns me that they will not have the opportunity to enjoy the beautiful landscape they've dominated for us to enjoy during our 60 years of farming. God may productive Tampa County soils and we need to be good stewards of our resources that all citizens may be blessed. Please do not give in to developers who seek their own profits. Instead, protect Tampa County's greatest natural resource, our farmland, from being overrun with industrial solar or wind projects. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts and concerns with you. Please know there are many books praying for you as you make your decisions that will affect the legacy and the future of our county.
After Beth is going to be Nikki Novak.
Hi, my name is Beth Esbenzheim and I live in rural trailer. And again, I'd like to thank the three of you for taking time tonight, receiving to spend with us and listen to our concerns and to update our ordinance to include the industrial solar. I would just like to add a few points to the proposed ordinance. I agree with the land of CSR two rating of 60 or above needs to remain in agricultural production and not for industrial use. The four points that I would like to see added to the ordinance, a conditional use permit should be submitted to the Board of Adjustments for approval, not the zoning administrator. The Board of Adjustments should approve or not approve a project. The zoning administrator's role is to just sign off on it and ensure everything meets the ordinance in place. Number two, an upfront meeting needs to be done between the developer, or the supervisor, zoning administrator, county engineer and county attorney before any easements can be signed with landlords. Number three, a public meeting needs to be held by the developer before any easements are signed. This meeting needs to be on the front page of the newspaper for two consecutive weeks to better inform the residents of Tampa County. And number four, compliance needs to be added to the ordinance. The zoning administrator needs to be able to review the project and revoke the permit if the ordinance isn't met in any way. Thank you for your time.
After Nikki is going to be Laura Wilson.
Hi, my name is Nikki Novak. My husband Tom and I live north of Tulio in Avery. First, I'd like to thank Kurt, Bill and Nan for orchestrating this meeting to get the residents' opinions on what they would like to see incorporated into the Tampa County solar ordinance. I recently read an article in the Gazette on some of Lynn County's ideas and their inputs on their solar ordinance, and one of them represents my sentiments. It said Tampa County should include a decommissioning agreement with financial assurance for renewable energy developers such as surety bond, bank letter of credit and parent company guarantee. This agreement should identify the depth at which all underground equipment and wiring will be removed at the end of the project's life cycle with costs calculated accordingly. The county should make a new determination of decommissioning costs every five years formed at the facilities, owner's, operator's expense by a licensed Iowa engineer approved by the county. This effort may include changes in the regulatory environment, equipment modifications, market considerations and recycling salvation technologies. Additionally, the county should incorporate a definition of abandonment into its utility scale solar code to signify when decommissioning should begin. The county representatives should also verify that the decommissioning has been completed to the county's satisfaction. Thank you.
After Laura is going to be John Winkler.
My name is Laura Wilson and I live in Dyers. I agree with many of the sections outlined in the current draft, but I also feel that areas were completely left out that should have been included and some of the portions could use further specification. I request that a section be added to cover project ownership transfers. At the very least, the county would need to receive proof that decommissioning costs would still be covered by the company. Other stipulations could be reviewed and added as well. I suggest adding a sufficient non-revenueable permit, application fees of $50,000 per application to cover the additional labor for processing in county offices. I suggest adding to the application process to require documentation that all neighbors within a five-mile radius of the proposed solar project be notified before any easements are able to be signed. For weed control, I request that the requirements be expanded to include that any meat and grass control plans be approved by the local FSA, Conservation Board and DNR for any plans to also ensure that methods would not ruin the soil after the project is decommissioned. I suggest for applications that the developer must provide a water runoff plan to prevent flooding or erosion to neighboring lands. I suggest adding a 12-month expiration of any conditional use permits and a six-month expiration of building permits on industrial solar projects. And after expiration, the process would need to start over completely to reacquire those permits, including any application fees. There need to be consequences for non-compliance of the ordinance or permits relating to a solar project, so I suggest fines of $10,000 per day per violation with the possibility of revoked permits. I request adding a section for taxation. Land should be reassessed at an industrial tax rate as it would no longer be agricultural. Any improvements or structural changes beyond basic repairs must be submitted and approved by the solar board and any improvements would also be reassessed for property tax delinquency. I believe that battery storage for solar projects causes great danger, so I suggest removing the ability to have battery stored on the property from where it is currently listed in Section 4 Subsection 7. Request including a section that specifically denies the presence of battery storage anywhere in Tampa County. I suggest adding a public comment process, complaint process so that citizens who feel there's been a violation can know who to submit their complaints to. Everyone can know how such submissions would be investigated and reviewed. This should include a time limit on the process so that it cannot be unreasonably dragged out without a conclusion. For landscape screening, I feel it should be required to match the height of a solar project at the time the screening is installed and be spaced well enough to reasonably disguise the panels beyond. Finally, while radiation and infrasound may be a small likelihood from solar projects, I suggest adding a section that prevents any radiation or infrasound at a neighboring property line for non-participating landlords. Thank you for moving forward with the solar ordinance and I hope you take my suggestions into consideration.
After John is going to be Mike Snyder.
My name is John Winkler. I'm a third generation farmer of rural Dyers. I, along with my entire family, oppose any industrial, solar or wind projects placed on ag farmland with a CSR two of 60 or greater. We are truly blessed with the prime farmland here in Tampa County. The highly productive farmland was meant to produce food for the ever-growing population we have. All, and I mean all, Tampa County residents need to be considered when developing these ordinances. It is our responsibility to protect the prime farmland, quality of life and wildlife of Tampa County. There is a clear reason for the high demand of prime farmland in Tampa County. It is disappearing at an astronomical rate. Thank you in advance for your consideration and doing your delighted job in protecting the taxpayers of Tampa County. Thank you.
After Mike is going to be Ellen Sinkin.
I have an emergency. So unfortunately, I have a...
Well, we'll launch to Ellen then.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Al Sheikh Paul, Tulio Farm and Care Township. If you're addressing all the higher CSR ground, I'm a little concerned about the low CSR ground. We have 45 below. We've got CRP ground. I think it's kind of competition against CRP ground. I don't know what kind of wording needs to be added to the ordinances, but I don't know. Something to think about. I kind of agree with Judy about the southern border, maybe finish the wall, but solar
Next is Karen Murdy.
Hi. I am Karen Murdy. I am representing fifth and sixth generation farmers this north and east of Tulio. I want to thank the supervisors for having this critical meeting to address some regulations because some of the things that have been going on for industrial have been going on for six years already and we didn't know anything about it. So most of these companies promised good faith negotiations, but if the public doesn't know about it, there's not a complaint process and everybody's got orders to be quiet from the top on down, it's kind of hard to have good faith in secret unsettling organizations. So far, we've been addressing turbines and solar and now transmission lines and fiber optic. Our concerns are grass and fire and maintenance ongoing and it's really hard because with our change of seasons, it's hard to get maintenance done in this area. Easements are signed on all of these turbines, solar and transmission fiber optic for 30 to 45 years and that's a long time. That's everybody's lifetime that's in this room. I'd like to know what country makes all of these green plan industrial technology and who benefits from them. They're not sustainable and the energy is outsourced, so who's benefiting from this? They're not safe. There's not enough studies out there to prove that they are safe. Plus, when we have things that burn here, we're going to burn. Problems are not unlikely because decommissioning is not even promised or financed, so there must be a problem if there's no decommissioning listed anywhere. We don't have current emergency equipment that is available in this county to deal with these. Our weak taxpayers have to tiff all of this. Most of the money and the energy is sent out and I don't know who's going to benefit, which communities, which states. Most of it's going to be sent away. The energy is not going to stay here. So I'm really glad that we can be here tonight and discuss this a little bit. In closing, Regenesis 8, God promises no more floods, but he says fire is going to destroy this country, this world. He promises, he promises that.
After Bill is going to be Mike Carberry.
Hello, everyone. I'm Bill Keeney. I'm chief development officer with TEG Noble. I want to first thank the board supervisors for our business opportunity discussed today. Also, the crowd that is clearly passionate and interested in learning more about solar. You know, part of this is the beginning of a long conversation, as Elias mentioned about the project. We're very early stage with our project. We have dozens of studies that need to be completed to understand what's on the site. We will identify sensitive areas such as cemeteries. We will avoid wetlands. We will identify there are species that we need to be aware of on the site. There are dozens of studies that we'll do before we even move forward with the project. We do believe this project will be a great business opportunity for Tampa County. We're projecting this project to be over $150 million of new capital. That will be on private land, no use of eminent domain at any time. We will have a significant impact on the tax revenue of Tampa County as well as the funding for North Tampa School District. We support overall the ordinance. I think we indicated before as a developer to know the rules of the road that we have to follow is really important and we plan to be honest and transparent throughout the process. There are a few provisions in the current draft ordinance which we would like to have changed that we don't think are workable for projects like ours. Restriction on project size of 25 megawatts, the requirement that a project fully avoid 100 or 500 year footpathing and the CSR requirements as well. We're hopeful that Tampa County will take advantage of this business opportunity. We're excited to be here and to answer questions, to make ourselves available. Thank you very much for giving us the time to speak and we appreciate that. We appreciate the time.